Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to the next order of business, 4.1, approval of the agenda for September the 20th, 2021.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Hammers?
Austin?
Aye.
Blissette?
Aye.
Leal Wolf?
Aye.
Mars?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Ringer?
Aye.
Zimmers?
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay. Okay, it is ordered by the governor that people must wear masks at indoor meetings. If there are members of the general public that refuse, we will suspend the meeting until people comply with the rules established by the governor of the state of Illinois. Officer Smith, is everyone in compliance? Thank you. Okay, moving on to 5.1. Public comments will occur during the public comments portion of the meeting. The board will not allow interruption during the meeting. If you're interested in addressing the board, please fill out the required public participation board meeting form and submit to Ms. Hammers. Please email your name, phone number, and topic of discussion or agenda item to boe@spss186.org if you wish to participate via telephone or email. Superintendent?
Yes, I'd like to introduce some guests that are back here. We're in full house tonight, and I would like to invite the three principals I invited to come on up this evening as well. Barbara, I'll let you go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, and to Brittany Gill. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present the artwork from our former principal here in Springfield School District. This is, we have Linda's. She... And Melon LaBarre and Susan Immo. We're members of a group, partners in profit. It was an investment group that we were all friends with. And then we no longer meet, but accepted in friendship throughout the year. And recently, when we did meet, we decided that we wanted to do something to honor our dear friend, Linda Rikers. So we, one of the members suggested, in her retirement, I think it was, became an artist and did a lot of painting. And so we suggested Richard Lamont, one of our members, that perhaps just maybe we would donate some work done by Linda. So they loved the idea, and so we, the tips had them framed and then labeled for each school. Of course, I'd like to say, though, that Linda was a proud Springfield School District educator who served over 30 years as an elementary teacher, a reading specialist, and a principal at three schools in Springfield. She had two daughters who went through the Springfield School District Schools. And her husband, Richard Rikers, also served as a teacher and school administrator in the district. Linda, her friends knew her, had a passion for teaching and learning. She imparted important traits of success to her students and teachers. Leadership, teamwork, hard work, work ethic, and a life of continued learning. So this particular one goes to, I believe, Blackhawk.
Stephanie McQuirco is our new principal there. And you have a lot of new walls, so.
And then this one goes to, I believe, Withrow.
Mers, Matheny, and Withrow together, so Matheny Withrow also has still some open wall space, I know.
And then this one goes, these two, we have two small ones, so we had them made together. So they go to Fairview School.
Some of that new space that's going on your school as well.
Other members of the tips group, I'd like to announce to everybody, those, our members are Ann Burton, Julie Dirksen, Susan Immo, Marilyn Tuchet, Melon LaBarre, Richard Lamont, Susan Madison, Donna Nelson, Lynn Reynolds, Carol Calderon. So we hope you enjoy my great place, first time out, and our friend Linda.
Thank you. Certainly will.
You want to see them?
Yeah.
Hey, turn around for the board.
Can we see them as well?
We see them?
That always happens.
Those are so good.
These were her dogs.
Oh.
Cool.
Well, the kids will love them. There's a great story.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. We so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was very special and very thoughtful from someone that spent a lot of time here in the district, and we're definitely grateful for that. Just a small president's comment. I've had the opportunity to visit about six schools, and the enthusiasm is overwhelming. So I think it's all because of you, Ms. Thompson. But I've been to DuBois and Graham. I've been to a couple of football games, and, you know, at lunch, sometimes I see kids walking back, back and forth from school and stuff like that, and everybody's smiling and happy. And you know what? They're even wearing their masks when they're walking home. So without further ado, 5.2, the student report. Ms. Thompson?
I just want to, I just want to start off by saying that schools are working on starting in-person after-school touring within the next few weeks, and then they are also working on virtual options as well for students. The next thing that I want to discuss is mental health. I think that plays a huge part in student academic performance. I know that schools have a designated person or multiple people that they can talk to at their school, but I think there should also be a designated mental health safe space for students. Just some type of designated area or room that students can go to to help make them feel more comfortable. This is something I'm willing to work on with superintendent roundtable, if this is something the district wants to include. And then the next thing I would also like to work with roundtable on is early graduation policies for high school students, just so that everyone is on the same page and things are made clear of what to expect if they make that decision.
You're not going to leave at mid-year, are you?
No, I'm not.
All right. Well, thank you for the report, and I appreciate all the students' enthusiasm. Moving on to 6.1, superintendent.
Certainly. Ms. Hammers, if you can start the Celebrate 186 slideshow. Just wanted to give everybody an update. We do have a, next Monday stated as our exclusion date for those who do not have their physicals and immunizations. We still have a number that's too large out there of individuals who have not taken care of one of those two things that they have to do by law. This has nothing to do with COVID. These are your general immunizations and physicals that are due each year. All students that are entering a pre-K program, kindergarten, sixth grade, ninth grade, where those new to our schools have to have a physical exam on file and with an updated immunization record. Kindergarten sixth and 12th grade students have specific immunization requirements that have to be met, and children entering kindergarten second, sixth, and ninth have to have a dental exam. So, and then also those that are in kindergarten have to have a vision exam. So those are the things that we're looking for. Most importantly, we're looking for those physicals and immunizations for the exclusion date. We don't want to have to do that. We already have kids in and out of school for other reasons. We want to make sure we do everything we can possibly do to provide opportunities for people to get physicals and immunizations. We do have a clinic this Saturday, September 25th, that will be from 10 o'clock until 1 o'clock. They had one last Saturday. Thank you to board member Austin for helping me get that set up. It's at the NAACP building on South 11th Street through the SIU School of Medicine, providing the clinic. And so there's no appointment needed. They are not going to be able to offer immunizations, but we're working with the San Diego County Health Department to do that part of it. So you may have a couple stops to make that day, but getting that done this Saturday could just take care of that business, and you're ready to go for Monday. Additionally, I know we've been talking about opportunities to get the COVID vaccination. The Illinois Emergency Management Agency did run one this past Saturday. They did vaccinate 24 individuals in our community, students and adults. We will have another one on October 9th, the same type of situation. Springfield High Commons, 9 to 1 o'clock. That is, if you wish to go and get your COVID vaccination, they will be set up there in a central location for ease of use. We'll be communicating that. People who need their second dose can go through the clinic that day, or they can go for their first dose. So we just wanted to highlight what we've been trying to do to bring those opportunities to people so that they can get their situation for physicals and immunizations taken care of and/or choose to get the COVID vaccination. We did start the Shield of Illinois testing the last week and a half. That is the saliva-based testing program. By September 30th, all schools will have an individual testing day stood up in their schools. We have schools that are scaffolding onto the testing schedule this week and into next week. We are working with Travel Healthcare to make sure that they get everything set up. It's been a little bit difficult for them to get their people upstarted with every school district in the state asking for the service, but we have had several school sites start this past week. We tested over 1,000. We had about 20 positive cases that were spread across different schools out of that 1,000, which isn't too bad of the students that we tested. So if you test, you're going to find cases. That's just the way that goes. And then the idea is to make sure that we get people quarantined and healthy again so that they can come back into school. Only students that are tested are those that have signed a waiver by their parents. We don't test anybody who has not signed a waiver. And then staff can also get tested at their school site. We are standing up opportunities for staff members who need to get tested now as a part of the new governor's executive order at different sites. If they don't have one yet at their site, they know where they can travel to. We sent that information out this morning. So I'm just going to switch, go down to slide 7, Julie. With the picture of Graham Elementary. Graham students had an opportunity to fist bump Principal Miller for their outstanding academic achievement. Their balanced calendar, so they were ready to go, and they had, are finishing up their first session of school before they start their fall break. So these two all-stars showed off their skills with Principal Miller when he quizzed them on their math facts and sight words. So they were down in his office, getting cheering on. We also, Charlena, we're showcasing you tonight. We've got Matheny Withrow. We're engaged in their learning as they worked on their math facts and silent reading. The students pictured with Principal Jackson are excited as she finished the math assignment in a timely manner and in a spirit of excellence. Did a great job, and Principal Jackson was there to give them a high five. So congratulations. The other thing that we've been doing throughout the district is celebrating Team 186. We need something positive to think about, and the one thing that I know that's positive is that our students are learning and our teachers are getting the job done each and every day. I couldn't thank them enough. But also, our office staffs are working very hard. We've put more on them than we've ever put on them before, and I can't thank them enough. Here's an example of Mrs. Jackson and her team. We've got administrative intern Mrs. Tennant, Principal Jackson, and Secretary Jackson, and they were excited to show their Team 186 spirit with their new Team 186 yard signs that we're going to have available to schools to pass out, and we have a lot of Team 186 logo. We need to celebrate each and every day. United Way also celebrated Team 186. One of the initiatives that we have this year, our communications department has done a great job of getting t-shirts and signs out to our various community partners. And United Way is one of those partners that helps us fund a lot of programs. Camp Compass, our Jump Start Program for kindergartners at Matheny Withrow, and several other programs throughout the district. They even are a part of a program that helps us fund some of our AP tests for our students in high school. So United Way is always there by our side, and they're wearing their Team 186 shirts in celebration and sent some photos in. So can't thank them enough for the things that they do for our community. So one of the biggest things that we have undertaken, we've undertaken is our big gigantic facilities project that's ongoing. We have 10 buildings, so we always give you an update of where we are. Blackhawk is up first. We have a new drone system that we're using to take aerial pictures of our sites. So this is a drone picture of Blackhawk's program and some on the ground. And I've even got Principal McQuirco there kind of showing off the new framework that's going up. But you can see a lot of the physical work from the sky version, vision there. The structural steel was put up on the 9th of September. The sewer is completed. They are starting the steel stud framing this week, and the flooring is a little delayed. So that's something that they're kind of walking around on some really cool concrete. I mean, that's, a lot of people are doing that anyway, so it's all right. And then the photos are of the steel actually being stood up at the school. So it's all great. It looks amazing. If you look at Butler Elementary School up next, this is a visual of the end of the building. That is actually the north wing of the building. You can see kind of the way it looks on the ground level and then where they're preparing that addition. The footing and foundations and excavation is complete. The footing and foundation rebar work is in progress, and the photos are of footing and foundation work across the building so that they can stand up the rest of the structure. DuBois, very similar age of building, same type of addition going on, and you can see where they're starting to do the work. The concrete foundation and slab on grade have been installed. Completed waterproofing and insulation at the foundation walls. They're expecting delivery of the structural steel within the next two weeks. And the photos are the slab prep through the drone and also the poured slab that you can see on the ground. So thank you for those amazing photos. Fairview Elementary. So Ms. Nixon, we're also showcasing you a little bit. You can see the slab work from the drone vision there. The steel columns from the old library were replaced. The electrical rough-in in the office area is in progress. Masonry openings at lobby entrance are complete. They're anticipating structural steel by the end of the month. That's been one of the hardest things for us to get and delayed some of our projects a bit. Installation of the face brick on the storage room will begin soon, and we're kind of looking at it from the storage addition there that's being built onto Fairview. We've got Sandberg Elementary School. You can see they have two different slabs that are being prepared for construction. Classroom addition, ramp and steps will be poured this week. The structural steel delivery is planned for early October, and the photos are the classroom addition and the office addition off the front of the building near the parking lot. We've got Franklin Middle School. The face brick is being applied on the classroom addition. That means it's going to start looking more like a building now instead of just a structure. Working on the roof of the cafeteria extension. And then the photos are of the classroom addition and the roofwork area, but you can see how much more space that's going to add to the cafeteria off the front. So it's pretty exciting for Franklin Middle School. Okay, we've got Grant Middle School that's next door here, attached to our building. All the work is off the back of the building, so you don't see it as you drive by as much, but a lot of roofing materials have been put down. It's almost complete. Working on the footings and the foundation off the back. The restroom partitions are now complete. They had some temporary ones, and now everything's in. And the photos are of the footing and foundation work off the back of the building as well. Jefferson Middle School. Cafeteria demo is complete. Footing and foundation work is progressing on the addition, and you can see sort of the aerial vision of where they're preparing the land and some of the work that they're doing in the demolition. And then last but not least is Washington Middle School. Boys restroom accent tile is still in custom somewhere, so it'll be here soon, but it still doesn't look too bad when you take a look at it there. We're working on the footings and foundation, and you can see off the back where they prepared the land for the addition and the work that they're going to do. So we're excited about the projects. They're coming along. They've done it in a way that they're working as hard as they can not to disturb, you know, disrupt any learning during the day. I say Washington and Jefferson have some of the hardest things they're tackling with not having full cafeterias for seating while they eat. They have full operating kitchens, but not necessarily all the seating, so they're having to spread out. We've got some outdoor dining and some things like that going on. But just wanted to say thank you to all the schools who are enduring some dust and some noise because the outcome is going to be amazing, and it's fun to bring these updates to you at the board meeting for sure. Anybody have any questions about any of the facilities projects? Turn it back over to you.
Well, it's really exciting.
I just wanted to say something before you, we want, you know, this is near and dear to my heart. I just want, I just really want to say to everybody, we just got all the kids back into school. I really don't want us to have to exclude any kids because they have not gotten these physicals and immunizations. So if you're listening to this and you have not done it and your children are eligible for this, please, please, please do it because we're going to have no choice on the 27th. Students don't have these. We're going to have to exclude them, and we really don't want to do that. So please, get that done this way.
I would also just add a quick, I was in, I was at Blackhawk today visiting, and they are, they are in it. They are in construction, like 100,000%, like, she's not kidding. The floors are concrete. It's a very rustic, little house on the prairie sort of a situation. But they are, they are very much rising to the occasion. You know, the kids all look, you know, great, but they're definitely deep, deep, deep into the construction.
Parking's a challenge.
It sure is.
While this is going on, we understand that.
Well, thank you for a great report. Moving on to 7.1, is there any old business?
Six point two.
Oh.
I have 6.2.
Administrator and teacher salary benefits report.
Yeah, that's not really an item. It's posted on our website starting tonight, so that's not really an item for discussion.
I'm good?
Yep.
Okay. All right, 7.1, okay. Once again, 7.1, old business. Any members have any old business to discuss? Okay. Seeing none. We will move to public comment. Ms. Hammers, why don't we go with online stuff first, and then we'll, for those who have signed up, we'll call in just a few minutes.
Just one moment. Let me get my timer up. Are we skipping 7.2 and 7.3?
I don't think we go to public comment yet.
Yeah, we have to do the 7.2.
Okay, here we go. Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. 7.2. A discussion of proposed resolution calling for the state of Illinois to consider inclusion of the FDA, inclusion of an FDA-approved COVID-19 vaccination to immunization schedule under Title 77 Public Health, Chapter 1, Subchapter I, Part 665, Section 665.230 of the Administrative Code. Is there any board discussion?
Yes, that was not my idea for a title, though.
That's very descriptive.
I would have just called it resolution, proposed resolution. All right, so. So this is a follow-up from the last board meeting. It was, I guess, an introduction because this wasn't an agenda item at the time, so this would constitute first reading. The resolution's been posted on websites. Everybody should be able to read it. I'll go ahead and read it in its entirety at this point, but I do want to note that there was one extra line that was added in the final paragraph. It starts with "therefore," and it was basically just a recognition of the legislative process that would be required, you know, eventually to do any adjustments to vaccine schedules. This was a recommendation by Superintendent Gill, and I think there was even discussion about this. So it was definitely a recognition, and there's no problems with that being in there. So I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas the Illinois Department of Public Health recognizes that immunizations, also known as vaccines, are one of our greatest defenses against many serious illnesses. And whereas the August 2021 Revised Public Health Guidance for Schools, Part 5, issued jointly by Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health, recognizes that vaccination is currently the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas Springfield Public School District 186 has hosted and will continue to host vaccination clinics to offer opportunities for students to receive the COVID-19 vaccination prior to and after the beginning of the school year. And whereas, under Title 77 Public Health, Chapter 1, Subchapter I, Part 665, Section 665.230 of the Administrative Code, it is stated that every child prior to enrolling in any public, private, independent, or parochial school in Illinois shall present to that school proof of immunity against diphtheria, pertussis, tetanus, polyomylitis, measles, rubella, mumps, hemophilia, influenza type B, hepatitis B, varicella, invasive pneumococcal disease, and meningococcal disease. And whereas it is noted under 105 ILCS 5/27 8.1, Section 27 8.15 of the School Code, that if a child does not comply by October 15th with these requirements, then the local school authorities shall exclude that child from school until such time as a child presents proof of having required, of having received those required immunizations, which are medically possible to receive immediately. And whereas it is the intention of Springfield Public School District 186 to expand opportunities for all students and empower them academically and emotionally, we also recognize the seriousness of the COVID-19 pandemic and the imperative for full-time, in-person learning to be safe and consistent. Therefore, Springfield Public School District 186 Board of Education, in recognition of the legislative process required to amend the Illinois School Code and Administrative Code, respectfully request that the Illinois State Board of Education and Illinois Department of Public Health consider including vaccinations for COVID-19 approved by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration into the regular schedule of immunization requirements currently mandated by the state of Illinois. So that language was almost identical except for that part about the legislative process, which, again, that's, you know, well above our pay grade, either through the General Assembly or through JCAR. And to, I guess, restate, you know, what I stated last time, you know, why this is important. Our quarantine policies are far different for vaccinated and unvaccinated students. Vaccinated students can continue to attend school if somebody at home has COVID, if somebody at home has symptoms, or if the student has a close contact to someone who's tested positive for COVID. But in all those cases, unvaccinated students are excluded. So vaccinations keep kids in school, and right now, if you look at our dashboard, that's one of our biggest problems is the quarantines, the exclusions that we're dealing with. So that's basically the most simple message. Our goal since March 2020 was to get kids into school in person, five days a week, but to do it safely. We've been back for four weeks now, and we can do things better. We've learned to overcome challenges in the classroom, in the lunchroom, but yet nurses across the district, they react to positive cases, and they'll tell you the good days when nobody had to be excluded, and also the bad days when potential exposures have decimated classrooms. At last check, we've still got approximately 1 in 4 eligible students who are vaccinated. Consequently, we've had situations where four positive cases can knock out 85% of an unvaccinated football team, and that leads to canceled games and ultimately a loss of learning and sports. But as our local health official said in our last meeting, the unvaccinated are likely to suffer the most severe effects of COVID, and that's almost 12,000 unvaccinated students in this district. We have a duty to offer a safe learning environment for everybody. So this resolution ties together all the things that we've been saying as a district, and it recognizes that there's a legislative process above our pay grade where clear direction could be equitably handed down to schools. And much like the mask mandate, people have clearly chosen this issue to define themselves, and if we're supposed to just encourage safety, it's only going to take us so far. So for those reasons, that's why I think this is an important resolution. I would request that this be placed on the agenda at our next meeting for a vote. I would encourage any discussion.
Well, if I could add something. We all need to take a breath. I think there's been a lot of miscommunications about what this is meaning. This is not mandated anything. We, as a school board, cannot. We, as a school board, cannot mandate something like this. We, it is out of our jurisdiction to do that. I think what we're trying to make a statement here, we're 19 months into this and we're still battling it. We want it to end for a school district because we want things to get back to normal like they were before the pandemic. I don't know if that will ever happen, it may or may not, but what we're doing right now is not working. I bet I could go across the street, this grocery store, and half the people in there, even though we have a public domain mask requirement, half the people in there will not be wearing a mask. And so, I think what we're saying as a school board, and again, we cannot mandate this, but if the governor and the legislature decide this is the thing they want to go, what we're saying to them, you have school district board in support of that. And again, we're not mandating anything because I think that's been out there and it's not true because we can't do that. We're just saying, if you do this, we're in support of it.
I would, I would agree 100%, and, you know, as, as board members, we have, you know, received a lot of concern about this resolution, and it's mixed in with a lot of confusion. This is not a resolution, as Mr. Zimmer's indicated, that we are mandating or dictating. We cannot dictate anything for the state of Illinois or any school district in the state of Illinois. But we also can see the trajectory that this vaccine is on, and as, you know, leaders in our school district, you know, we have a, you know, an obligation to just give a nod of, we understand where this is going, and if the legislation moves in this direction, then, you know, this is where we know we will, where we will land on the issue. So, it's not a, just to be clear, I'm trying to be as crystal clear as I can, this is not us mandating the COVID-19 vaccination. This is us giving a signal that we understand where this is going and we would support it.
I would just like to say, I do understand it's a formality, but I sit up here as probably the least educated member of this board, and I don't know how I am qualified enough to make this ask of anybody. I'm not a medical professional. I worked at a pharmacy when I was 16, that's it, like, you know, so how do I have that knowledge base that is greater than what, say, IDPH has, who I feel honestly should be making this request? And I would tell anybody who asks me, I 100% think this is going to get added to school code someday. I'm not against the vaccine, I'm vaccinated, as are both of my children, but I don't feel that I have those qualifications to make that ask of anybody because I'm not, I'm not trained, I was not meaning that to be like a soapbox speech, but that's just how I feel, like, you know, I, you know, you have all your experience at SIU, you are a nurse, you guys have much more experience than I do in the medical field. I, I work for an insurance company, you know, so, so somebody please convince me that I have the experience to make this ask of anybody.
I would like to respond to that. So, this, this would go above even IDPH and ISB. Usually, from, from what I can tell, it would be the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, which is NARM of the CDC, which makes these recommendations through the CDC, and then states, it's incumbent upon them if they want to adopt this. You know, we've got 12 vaccinations right now on the schedule, and those may not look like the vaccinations that Alabama or another state uses. So, just because this could potentially come down the pipeline as a recommendation for school districts doesn't mean that ISB or IDPH would adopt it. So, we're not, we're not telling them what to do, we're just letting them know, hey, if, if this is a consideration in the future, we know JCAR, the, the General Assembly, that's a slow process, and we're gonna end up here next year trying to convince people all over again that COVID vaccinations are gonna keep you in school and keep our doors open. And we've already got 12 other vaccines that we don't try to convince people. We just tell them, there's a date, get the vaccinations, and thank God, because if we had to try to convince people about measles, I mean, at this point, I, it's hard enough to get people to wear masks.
So, with your point too about the other vaccinations in the school code, I honestly, I thought we were voting on this today, so I did some research over the weekend or earlier last week, and I actually pulled out my 15-year-old's immunization records from his physical this year, and 15 years' worth of his whole immunization history is there. So, one thing that really struck with me is that in all of those immunizations, every single one, there's a set schedule that is followed, two, four, six, one year, whatever, you know, and they all have boosters, so I'm not sitting here saying I don't support boosters, but they all have a set schedule. And I even looked them up on the CDC's website because I thought, okay, well, it's been 15 years since he's had some of these, so has anything changed? And it was still the exact same as when he got them 15 years ago. And we don't have that yet for COVID. We just have, we know there's the first dose, second dose, and now they're talking about the, the boosters, and so that's where my concerns are at. Not that I, not that I say that I don't support the vaccine, I just am not sure, A, that I'm qualified to make this ask to anybody, and B, that we're quite there yet.
And, and we wouldn't tell people the schedule. ISB wouldn't either.
Right, yeah.
It's listed to get vaccines in the school code, administrative rules is where you get details fleshed out, and then at IDPH, on their website, it shows at what age what vaccine's appropriate. This would be constantly changing, obviously, because the guidance is gonna be changing.
Right, so, I guess, okay, if, if IDPH comes out and says this has to be a yearly booster, do we have staff to take over 13,000 immunization records? We're already talking about excluding a large chunk of kids, and now you're adding even more to that, like, these are all the things I've been thinking about, but, you know, like I said, I keep an open mind, so.
The only, the only other thing I wanna know is, you know, starting in the fall of 2015, the state mandated an MCV4 vaccine for meningitis, and that was added to the schedule. It was fairly recent, it was a fairly new vaccine, it was also unavailable for children under 11 in response to outbreaks throughout the country, which pale in comparison to what we're dealing with right now. And Illinois, Illinois data shows an average of 115 cases of meningitis here in Illinois, 10% of which are fatal. So, how, how did we not have an outcry about that vaccine then? How do we not have an outcry about that vaccine right now? I, I just don't know what happened to our country. We're back in 2015, this made sense to keep our schools safe, and now we have people telling us to not trust the health officials, and we're dragging in here asking for guidance. You know, Superintendent.
I don't have an outcry about.
I just wanna say, we've, we've got a wonderful relationship with our medical community, and it's just, I find it ultimately ironic that we're in the business of educating, we've got a pipeline to, to the medical community. We hope our students become future doctors and surgeons and innovators of medicine, and we want the community to trust their wisdom when we need it.
Well, and I'd like to add to that too, and I think I kinda alluded to this the last board meeting. Everybody in this room, everybody in this country of the United States has rights. The thing that's bothering me with those rights, where's the responsibility? We all need to be responsible for each other.
That's it.
To take care of each other. This is the first time since I've been alive, and I've been alive for quite a while, I wanna tell you that, obviously, that when we have been in a crisis, this country has not come together, we have been divided. This is a crisis, and for people to say we're not, I want you to explain that to the families of the 670,000 people that have died from this. I want you to explain that to people, why doing nothing or doing little, I don't wanna hear what you have to say right now, I'm speaking, all right? No, no, you may not, no. You may not.
Public comment.
We're in public comments.
It's not public comment.
We're not gonna allow disruption.
Thank you, Ray.
So, we have rights. We need to start thinking about responsibility. We need to take care of each other and stop this infighting and this division, and that's where I'm coming from on this. We have got to do something. COVID is still here, it's still rampant, people are still dying, and statistics will show you, I hear this every day, everything I read, everything on the news, 99% of the people in ICU rooms that are dying are unvaccinated, so think about that. It is true.
It is true.
It is true.
We do have some public comment coming up.
All right, well, obviously, some, a lot of discussion with this, and I believe we had an opportunity to speak with our consul, and I'll read this statement. Statement of resolution, and a lot of this has already been alluded to, but this is from our consul, neither the Illinois Department of Public Health nor the Illinois State Board of Education are bound by the actions of this board, or are they required to take into consideration any actions on advisory resolutions from an individual school boards within the state of Illinois? The resolution that the board is considering is a symbolic gesture designed to advise state officials on how voting board members feel about vaccinations. Nevertheless, the voting board members believe it is important to send a message to state officials regarding vaccinations through their votes on this resolution. All right, moving on to 7.3, is there any new business to bring before the board?
I have a question. So, what happens with our surplus property? So, if we have old computers and stuff like when these got swapped out?
Oh, we generally, that's like a whole new, whoa, whoa.
What do you mean by that?
Yes.
This is something light, this is something light.
So, for instance, our technology, we often do resale for parts, casings, things like that. We have some different companies that we work with, so when technology is obsolete, we either resell them and they either refurbish them or use their parts. For instance, when we refurbish old TVs, you know, they, we send them off and they use them.
Are we able to donate stuff?
Um, we can donate at times, but it has to go through the surplus process first, and it's kind of.
You already probably know where I'm going. I met Mr. David Fowler at the Computer Bank.
Okay, yes.
And I donated some stuff from my work and just got talking, and he knew that I was on the school board, and so he said that he would love to have a relationship with the school district if we have stuff that we can channel his way.
Okay, most, most definitely. I know that Mr. Minch, in charge of our technology department, does have a relationship or knows, knows Mr. Fowler, so we'll continue to build that relationship. I've been out to their shop before, it's amazing, and.
It's incredible.
We've actually made sure that we help them get it piped like for some of our after-school programs and things like that as well.
And they do have somebody that can work on Macs and stuff, so they do have the technology to do, to do that, yeah.
Sure.
Mr. Mars, I have a new business item.
Sure.
And it's really around remote learning and a couple dovetailing thoughts. I had the privilege of meeting with superintendent and a concerned parent last Friday, talking about, you know, just life in getting back to school and in District 186, and how that works with quarantining and keeping track of kids, et cetera. And then I was in two schools today and had excellent conversations with teachers about, you know, how's it going, we're week four, we're starting week five, how are things, you know, lining up? And one of the things that came up, the, over, one of the overriding themes was about quarantine and quarantine kids. Teachers are having to do a lot of balancing of classroom kids and quarantine kids, and could a remote option be a part of the quarantine process? Now, I am fully aware that we have a teacher shortage already in nationwide and in our district, but I do think it may be the time to just at least map out that framework of what it could look like in that I'm a, I'm a classroom teacher and I've got a kid that's gonna go into quarantine, and so I hand them off to, to you, Dr. Moody. I'm gonna send you Suzie, she's out for two weeks, and she goes in the quarantine classroom that's remote, if you will. I'm making that all up in my head. Please don't leave here saying that I said that we were starting remote, remote learning on Monday. But I do think.
That's it, thank you.
I do think that, I do think, you know, we did what ISBE instructed us to do, was get kids back in the classroom, get them back in seats, let's do in-person learning. And I think the next part, that's part A, I think the next part of that, part B, is now that they're here and we're kinda chugging along a little bit, now what's the next piece and how we can keep, how we can keep kids in school? And what's the best avenue if they can't be in school, then, you know, what can we, what pieces and parts can we put in place for that, to catch them? So, I think those two conversations between a parent and then several teachers really dovetail together that, you know, we need some sort of, and it's no secret about how I feel about remote learning, and I, and I do support it. And I think the vision I have for Remote Learning Academy is, is a couple years down the road, we're not there yet, I think we're still in crisis mode trying to deal with how we get our quarantine kids the best option for learning that they absolutely can. So, I would just, you know, charge superintendent and her staff to just try to start taking a look at that framework and seeing what options may or may not be available, with a full understanding that the teacher shortage is gonna play a big part, it's, you know, resource draining. But I'm trying to figure out how we can balance that a little bit better.
I, I just wanted to say, I, I fully agree with you there. I've got a couple children that are too young to be vaccinated, and we keep getting the report over, you know, each week of how their school's doing, and I just feel like it's a matter of time before we're gonna have to pivot over to some kind of a, a remote option for them. And just if anybody looks at our students in exclusion, I mean, the numbers are staggering. And you look at the area schools, they're, they're not nearly as lopsided as, as we are when it comes to positive cases and those in exclusion. I think that also makes a case for vaccinations keep kids in school. I know that, that we may have some emergency use authorization for as young as five to 11, that would cover the other half of our students right now that are ineligible, which could be down the line. But also, there's a new executive order that came out, 2021-24, which I believe offered some kind of guidance for alter, alternative testing to exclusion, which involves testing, and I haven't been able to look at it close enough, I just got it this afternoon. But I think whatever we can do to mitigate the amount of students in exclusion is one of our highest priorities, but also having some kind of equitable plan of action for remote learning for the inevitable quarantines is the second side of that, and I think you're, you're definitely on the right track with getting that conversation going.
I'd like to take, take a moment to say thank you for your words, and I enjoyed meeting with the parent the other day and just talking about all the ins and outs of, of the world that I live in, which is much different than it was 19 months ago. I'd like to give a shout-out to Dr. Moody and her team who have been working on standing up what this instruction looks like during quarantine, and if the board would like, I could give a presentation that would be short on that topic next week to tell you where we are next time we meet, to tell you where we are, what we've stood up, and what we can do at this point in time, because your vision is similar to mine, we, we don't deny that. I would say proportionately, we're probably about the same with 13,200 students that are to other smaller districts. Well, I, I've done the, I've done some of the number polling myself, but it, it is something that I can say, we're doing, we're following the rules, is what I'm saying, 100% all of the time. We do the contact tracing, we're doing the right thing by the exclusions that we're doing, and I'm proud of our district for the work that we're doing in that area to make sure that we're, we're safe. But I think, you know, the framework for the remote part has come on the backs of our teachers who are doing a noble job in the classroom each and every day. They worry about the kids that aren't there, and they worry about checking in with them and are trying to balance all the ins and outs. So, Dr. Moody and I would love to present at the next board meeting and, and be able to share with you what we've, what we've come up with.
Do we already have a test to stay plan in place?
Well, at first, the test to stay and, and honestly, the chart from the state, from the Sangamon County Department of Public Health said that our spread was too much in our, in our community to offer that option, so they were not recommending it. However, at the last meeting that I had with them, they were amenable to us looking into those options either after seventh day, coming back and testing, and then testing thereafter, or doing a more aggressive test to stay after day one, three, five, and seven, I believe, at that point in time. It just, where are we gonna test and how do we help individuals get those tests? We didn't want that all to lie on the backs of our nurses that we're trying to come up with physicals and immunizations, so we have hired over 12 CNAs and LPNs to get them in the system, get them trained, and it is our goal to, you know, make most definitely move to a test to stay program, as you mentioned, that is getting a little bit more legs and the, you know, being a recommendation from ISBE as well as the Health Department is, is coming around to that, that notion. Because we aren't seeing spread on those that have been out, so.
Yeah. I, I think if we can, I think if we can continue to move in the direction that we're helping our teachers balance of quarantine kids and, and non-quarantine kids, you know, ironically, when I was at one of the schools today, there was a, a student in this, in the classroom who had to be quarantined because, you know, of an exposure, and, you know, I really just, I felt for the teacher because. And, you know, I really just, I felt for the teacher because, you know, she, she was not going to see that kid for 24 more days. And, you know, it's already a, we already know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not giving out any trade secrets here. We already know we're behind the eight ball when we came back into school until in-person learning. We already knew that there was a, a learning loss, that we had to kind of fill that gap and keep that moving, et cetera. So, you know, if we can keep those, those classrooms humming with teachers in place and, and activity, I think, I think the better off our students are going to be and our teachers are going to, you know, really at the end of the day be.
Just to remind you, when you look at that number on our chart too, some of those are symptomatic students.
Yes.
And so it's not all people that have been in positive, had a exposure to a positive student, some are symptomatic. Just to make sure we understand that those exclusion numbers are all encompassing that we have on our, on our website.
Well, superintendent, if, if maybe you could explain so people can understand, when we have students on quarantine, they're not just sitting idle doing nothing. Maybe you want to explain.
No, they can, they can get onto our Canvas website. There are activities posted for them to do. Some of them are interactive. Teachers are checking in with students. We're setting up a framework where after school, teachers can check in as well as during the day to provide any direct instruction. We realize that it's different in every classroom and different with different subject areas, but we are required to provide five o'clock hours of instruction for every student and we do that through our Canvas website.
I think this would be the time I would call in the community that you help facilitate that for your child. If your child has to be quarantined, you know, that you are also taking an active role. And I know it's, it's burdensome for working parents and parents of multiple children, et cetera. That's why I want to try and find some sort of better balance so that quarantine kids, you know, I just, I think that we're, we're moving into a different phase that we haven't been in before. It's not remote learning like last year. I think we're in a whole different ballpark and I think we have to figure out where the bases are and I don't know that we know that right yet.
I think the one thing we have to be careful about, because I'm not sure this worked last year, was the hybrid teaching.
Yeah.
HiFlex.
HiFlex.
Or HiFlex teaching.
Yeah.
You know, where, where teachers are doing remote and, and in classroom because that, that's very difficult to navigate. So, and you're probably right, you probably don't have enough staff to, you know, just have people do just remote. But it sounds like at least at this point until, and I, I know you're going to work it out, Dr. Moody, you owe me, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind, but I, I just, I just wanted to make it clear so people understood that kids are not just sitting at home for their quarantine days, that there is work being provided.
And we have, pass up, the hotspots are active. Each school has hotspots, so if a family needs a hotspot, we just remind you that it's one per family because 10 devices can connect to one hotspot. And those are at the schools. They're active T-Mobile, so all they have to do is ask and they shall receive. Hopefully they turn theirs back in from last year. If not, bring it back, we'll get it turned back on for you and, and get all of that too. So, you know, we're just, we're, all the devices are in students' hands so that they can access that learning at home.
Thank you.
I would also like to second what you said, Mr. Zimmers, about HiFlex. I think that was an extraordinary amount of pressure to be putting on teachers and that, you know, when we're talking about remote learning, I think that I would be in agreement with you on that.
Well, I think we, you know, obviously as, as Ms. LaWolfe mentioned a few minutes ago, superintendent mentioned that, you know, Graham and Southern View are, are finished with their first quarter. And, you know, now we're in the fifth week and I believe progress reports will be going out towards the end of this week. You know, I'm so grateful for what we have right now. You know, I've always been an advocate of kids in school. I realize that, you know, it's not a perfect situation, but I look right now, we've got 90%, almost 90% of our kids attending class on a daily basis. So, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction and I think, you know, there are teachers and principals and administrators here and I think we all know that in-person learning works best. So just hats off to everybody for all their hard work, their dedication and their commitment. Is there any other new business to bring before the board? All right, we're going to move into public comment. I have my disclaimer to read. The Board of Education, I encourage public comment and public participation in board meetings. However, it is inappropriate for any person to name a student or an individual employee, including designating an employee by job title, rather than name an open session. If any public commenter wants to address issues related to an individual student or a District 186 employee, that commenter is invited to contact the board office or a member of the cabinet prior to public comment. It is not the intention of the board to discourage public comment in any way, rather it is the intention of the board to address issues regarding individual students and employees in an appropriate manner. We thank you for respecting the privacy of our students and employees by following this rule. Recently YouTube removed a board meeting video due to information related to an important public health issue that they deemed not accurate. YouTube also provided a warning of further repercussions. Springfield Public School District 186 encourages public comment, but we also desire, desire that the public business be, we conduct at board meetings be widely available through YouTube. Therefore, we will not, we will no longer include public comment in our YouTube meeting videos so that public business is available to district families. The meeting is also available currently now on cable channel 22, Uverse, channel nine, and at the public access streaming link. So that takes care of the disclaimer. I am glad that we have so many people in attendance today. Ms. Hammers, I believe we have some public comments?
We do, we have, we have three emails and then the sheet is down.
Okay, so Ms. Hammers is going to read the public email comments first and then I have got the public comment here and I will call them up in the order I guess that they were received. Ms. Hammers?
The first one is from Tracy Owens. She said, Superintendent Gill and District 186 School Board Members, I believe it is imperative that Springfield School District 186 follow the advice of the Illinois and Sangamon County Departments of Public Health and the Centers for Disease Control when it comes to making choices about COVID vaccines and mask guidelines. Anti-vaxers and anti-maskers are keeping the pandemic going by infecting others and spreading dangerous information. Please do not make decisions based on the opinions of misguided parents or guardians. Follow the science in order to keep our students, teachers, staff, and administrators safe. Please include my comments during the public comment period at September 20th school board meeting. Tracy Owens. The next one is from Jeff Summers. He says, School Board President, Mr. Mars and Superintendent Gill and members of the board. This letter is written on behalf of concerned parents from District 186, all of whom represent fully vaccinated children under the guidance of their family physicians. This letter is not written to provide a litany of data that now exists after almost a year of the genetic therapy drugs, otherwise known to the public as COVID-19 vaccines, being made available to the general public. There are many videos that exist of parents and experts presenting that information at various school board and city council meetings. This letter is not written to implore you to vote no on the proposed mandate brought forth by Mr. Micah Miller to require the administration of the COVID-19 emergency use authorization drugs in our children, which prohibits a parent's right to informed consent and violates the Nuremberg International Code of Ethics established after World War II to prevent experimentation on human beings. This letter is not written to convince other parents that the COVID-19 genetic therapy drugs, which some hope the board will mandate, are dangerous to their children and have known severe side effects and deaths associated with them. According to the CDC's Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, which represents only 1% of all adverse events, the numbers currently indicate 14,925 deaths and 701, 559 adverse reaction cases. These numbers do not include those of the EU reporting system. Parents can decide for themselves what's right for their own children and the level of risk they are willing to take. Nor is this letter written to inform the community that per the CDC's website, children have a 99.998% survival rate from SARS-CoV-2, statistically speaking, a 0% chance of dying. And per the CDC, are not considered carriers, nor are they considered an endangerment to the public. This letter is written to put each one of you, President Mars, Superintendent Gill, Mr. Zimmers, Mr. Miller, Ms. Bellicet, Ms. LaWolfe, Ms. Austin, and Mr. Ringer on notice and to inform each of you that if the COVID-19 vaccine, vaccine mandate is passed by this board, you will each be served and held personally liable for any physical or psychological damage that is inflicted upon our children due to your arrogance, negligence, and illegal use of power and authority. We, the people, are protected by common law, the law of God, which supersedes any man-made law, mandate, or decree brought forth. This letter is written as a reminder that we live in a republic where power is held by the people for the people. The republic was established by our forefathers to preserve the liberty and personal freedoms unencumbered by tyranny and persecution. We are on the precipice, precipice of losing the very liberties that were proclaimed as sacred right here in our hometown of Springfield, Illinois, by President Abraham Lincoln, who declared that all human beings shall be free. Our ancestors fought to preserve these liberties and that is time. And then the last one is from Catherine P. Roberts. I'm submitting the following to be read aloud at the meeting during the public comment period. Thank you. I wish to comment briefly in support of the resolution urging ISBE and IDPH to add FDA-approved vaccines, FDA-approved vaccination against COVID-19 to the schedule of required immunizations for Illinois students. If the concern is science, the recommendations of researchers, physicians, and public health experts are clear and overwhelming in favor of vaccination, not only as an individual choice, but as a collective necessity so that we can beat this virus. There's no need for board members to reinvent the wheel by evaluating the scientific and medical research without having the benefit of expertise in those areas in most cases. Those conclusions are already before us in the form of FDA emergency use authorizations and approvals. If the concern is public opinion, despite the vitrolic comments many have made against this resolution, solid majorities of Americans favor mask mandates and vaccine mandates in a wide variety of settings. Too often, this is a silent majority in favor of caring for one another and taking responsibility for one another, but not as loud as the voices in favor of individual freedom without responsibility. Consider me one of the majority voices in favor of mutual care, mutual responsibility in this resolution. Please vote yes on October 4th.
Thank you, Ms. Hammers.
Yes.
Before we bring up the speaker, don't you have a little disclaimer about time and that?
Yes, I have a, I have a timer in front of me and each of the speakers, when you come up, when you begin speaking, I will start the timer and I will let you know once your three minutes is up.
Okay, first we have Ellie Squires.
Oh, there's a, and then just speak right into the speaker so that people can hear really well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us open.
We may have to turn that to, yeah, there you go. Perfect.
First of all, as parents, I, first of all, I am here with a group of very strong people. We are the constitutional crusaders and we will be back and we will keep coming back and we will be marching on the streets. As parents, we should not be making informed decisions for our children that we have no, no science to back up. Our children are not dying of this disease. They are not lepers. They are not carriers. And when they get sick, they are not dying. They have summer colds or winter colds symptoms. And it seems very far-reaching to tell me in a mandate, a state mandate, that my child has got to be vaccinated. The vaccines that you already have to have are many and somebody, one of the speakers today said that you don't have to get these vaccines. Your children don't have to get these vaccines. They do have to get these vaccines. My child got the first set of vaccines at six weeks old. I was horrified. Not only was he a beautiful little baby when I took him in, 72 hours later, I couldn't get him to stop crying. He has Asperger's now, which he had no signs of Asperger's before these vaccinations. We don't know what this vaccine is going to do in the long run. I don't know what it's going to do to me and I'm vaccinated, but I don't want my child to be forced into having a vaccine because he chose to go to college. And that is apparently what's seemingly going to happen. Everybody is very scared to not say mandate, but we know that that's what's coming up as a mandate. I could see if it was killing our children, but it's not killing our children. This is a hysterical response to a sickness that we absolutely in our bodies can overcome. There's enough people that have been vaccinated in the United States and probably the world that we're relatively safe. I agree, more people should maybe think about getting it, but not our children. We do not know what is down the road with our children. I know myself, I have problems from getting the vaccine, minimal compared to my child if my child can't bear children or have children. So I would ask for a little cautionary, maybe walk softly with this thing. It's not, it's, it's just not proven enough for me to get on board. And I do like that there are people on the board that are saying, wait a minute, should we be, should we be saying these things? Because I don't think we have enough information. Thank you very much for giving me a little bit of time to speak my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandy Stenons?
That was close.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I can't read.
Thank you for a chance to talk with you. I would start with just a quick question. Why are you sitting on this board? Why did you run for the board? I'm assuming that it was because you felt like, I've got something to contribute. I'm a bright, intelligent person and I love the kids and I want to contribute and make good decisions towards that. I'm assuming that and I'm assuming based on your background, you're of a higher-than-average IQ and you probably do a lot of research. So given the fact that you've researched, I'm assuming that one of your main sources of information would be probably the CDC site. So when we talk about the vaccine and mandating it, if we go to that VAERS report that's on the, I know you all know what that is, when you look at the numbers and the statistics of people that are dying, thousands of people dying from the vaccine, hundreds of thousands of adverse events and reactions that are permanent health problems, we know that the vaccine is not proven to be safe. So when we're mandating it for children, we're making a decision that they don't, they don't even need the vaccine. As Ellie said, it's almost 100% recovery rate for kids and the COVID vaccine, or the COVID disease, excuse me. So the vaccine isn't needed for them. But I think what I see is you operating out of fear. And I would ask you to step up with some courage, put on some backbone, and instead of saying to Illinois Board of Higher Education, we already agree with what we know you're going to do and we're in, what about, we're not so sure we agree with you. Our kids don't need a vaccine. They need parents to make that decision for them. But it has not been proven and you can see all of the disaster. One person said they'd never known of anyone that died from the vaccine. Look at the VAERS report, which is expected to be only 10% of the things that go awry, 10%. And they're showing hundreds of thousands of adverse reactions and thousands of people dying from it. So I would just ask you to take a look at what are you afraid of? Is it Biden laying down the law and saying that, okay, any governor that gets in the way, I'm going to help take them out? Those were Biden's words. Is it Pritzker you're afraid of? Is it the Board of Higher Education? Is it the union? Who is it that you're afraid of?
Time.
Because the vaccine has not been proven to be effective.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marlene Banday?
Banday.
Banday.
I also object to agreeing with this mandate before it even becomes a mandate. As has already been indicated, there's no necessity for a quote-unquote vaccine. And that, that I would like to clear up right here. This is not a vaccine. So all of the vaccines that you listed off, Mr. Miller, went through a period of testing of 10 to 15 years before they were approved by the FDA. And that's a fraction of what we have here. At the, at the outs, like. At the outside, like the outer limits, we have 18 months. And I object to agreeing to any mandate on that basis. There's simply not enough data to show the long-term risks, the long-term effects. You cannot substitute anything for the passage of time. And so that's one of the reasons I object to it. Secondly, what about natural immunity? Last time I checked, in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, we talked about antibodies, we talked about T cells, very basic rudimentary immunity subjects. And that brings me back to talking about them as vaccines. They are not immunizations. They are not vaccines, or the COVID shot is not either of those. It does not prevent you from getting it or spreading it. So why are we here? I mean, I'm going to echo what Sandy said, that what is driving this board to say, go ahead, do that, if you don't mind? It seems politically motivated, because I'm here for those people, those parents that haven't even been notified that we're talking tonight. And I also object to that. This is a very serious topic. I object to it just being decided upon in two or three weeks by this board. They need to be personally notified, these parents, that this decision is being made. And I know there's, you know, implied notice over, you know, that this is when we're deciding it, but really, this is a very serious topic. And this is what, parents need to know, that this is being decided by a handful of people. It's going to affect their children from now and potentially the rest of their lives. I think that the data that different people are using, such as the 99% that are hospitalized...
Time.
Thank you.
I think it's corrupt. I think the data is corrupt.
Our next speaker will be Carrie Tate.
Good evening. I feel like a little late to the party tonight, Board of Education and Superintendent Gill, because I really didn't come to talk about the vaccine at all. I came to talk about something simple, the mask mandate. Across my Facebook feed and throughout the community organizations I participate in, I'm hearing a resurgence of objections to the mask mandate. And I came after sending each of the board members a letter expressing my support for that, never dreaming that I was going to kind of have my wind out of my sails. But I am here as a very interested community member. I obviously don't have very young children, but I do have grandchildren, and I am the mom of a teacher, and I know what this is doing to children, and I know what this is doing to teachers. And just the controversy over something as simple as this, I can't even imagine what we're all in for as we begin to seriously contemplate a vaccine mandate. I just want to make sure that sometimes those of us who believe that things are moving along towards progress, sometimes we're a little quiet. Sometimes we rest and are a little complacent. And so I'm here tonight to not be complacent. This is a very serious issue to me, and I want to make sure that you understand that there are many, many, many people like me who very much support the mask mandate, who very much see the value in that, and who understand that we are all responsible for each other. We may not like it, but we are. And wearing a mask protects me. It also protects the children that I work with, the adult volunteers that I work with. It protects all of us. And I'm not going to get into the mandate about the vaccine, but the whole point is community good. We all need to be in this for each other, because you can talk about herd immunity, you can talk about all of those things, but unless we all start taking a look at the impact this is having on the broader community, this is not going to go away. It's not going to get any better. And our kids are struggling. They just are. They're in classrooms, and that is better than not. I'm not going to argue that it is better. But it is at a cost, and I'm very concerned. So I'm here to support the mask mandate. I'm here to be an alternative to the squeaky wheel that I know you're all hearing, because I'm hearing it too. So I appreciate your support. I appreciate the hard decisions that you have to make. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Carol Taylor.
The life of children in 2021, they can choose to abort their baby. They can choose to risk getting an STD and passing it on to someone else. They can choose to drive, risking serious harm and death to others. They can choose their gender. They can choose how they want to treat others, even if it's by the color of their skin, and even if their teachers are teaching them to do so. Where they, they can choose what they want to say, as long as they are politically correct and they aren't conservative. They cannot choose to wear masks, even though they aren't experiencing COVID symptoms. They witness the same adults who put masks not wearing masks. They witness the very same adults who are overly sensitive about COVID going out to eat or ordering takeout, where food is made for them by cooks and served by servers, and they have no idea what health status is of those individuals. Do they check their vaccine cards before they order? Do they ask them if they've had COVID, hepatitis A, etc. before they order? They are told natural immunity means nothing, even though science proves it does. They see government officials, companies that make COVID shots, and illegal immigrants getting the right to choose. On social media, they see people recovering from COVID with medication like ivermectin, which I have used, which saved me, and vitamins, yet adults who are supposed to know better continue to ignore this important information, including doctors. They see areas in the world with the highest vaccination rates, and they also have the highest infection rates. They see that two FDA officials resigned over the current administration's booster shot plan, saying it insisted on the policy before the agency even approved it, continuing on in 2021, where kids can be forced to miss all events in their life for 14 days with no symptoms or maybe a stuffy nose, where they are treated worse by their own government than illegal immigrants, where they can commit suicide in greater numbers due to COVID and the lockdowns, while the stats on the psychological effects on teenagers and children are ignored by the same people who act like they care about lives when it suits their narrative that they're pushing. And where they are possibly going to be forced and given no choice to take a shot, the statistics show does not work like we were told it would, a shot that has caused and will continue to cause hundreds of thousands of injuries like myocarditis, neurological damage, autoimmune disease, and a list of unknown future illnesses since we are the guinea pigs for this shot. How can teenagers or any kids believe anything being told to them when they can see stats showing their age group survival rate to the COVID virus is 99.997, and their infection vitality rate is .00003? The data on child mortality for COVID shows that deaths caused by injury, suicide, cancer, homicide, congenital anomalies, heart disease, chronic lower respiratory diseases, cerebrovascular complications, and even influenza were all more common than the related COVID among children. I timed myself earlier. I finished this without a problem in three minutes. I believe you cut me off. I had more to say. Hope you all consider what I said.
Our next speaker is Chantel Renee.
So I know we're all here for the same reason, because we have the best interest in our children in mind, and there's a lot of conflicting information out there. There's way too much controversy, confusion, false information, censorship big time, lies, deception, and fear mongering. I believe children should not be forced into a pharmaceutical government experiment, especially when the parents do not agree. And I understand that it's not here yet, but like she said, it's on the way. So I definitely do not trust the federal government, the CDC, the World Health Organization, or Big Pharma to make my family's life choices. And it's obviously clear, and to the point, that the vax does not stop infection or transmission. So there's too much segregation already. It's not just simply the vaccinated versus the unvaccinated, as we frequently hear, because everybody is susceptible. And if you're going to test and quarantine the unvaccinated, you need to do the same for the vaccinated, because it shows that you can also have COVID and transfer it as well. So the breakout cases are showing that the vaccinated are still becoming infected, and natural immunity is far more effective against the variants. And what if we make a horrible mistake by mass injection with no long-term data? What will happen to the future generations? We have no idea. And it's not the government's job to protect my health. It's the government's job to protect my rights, and it's my job to protect my child's health. And when you trade liberty for safety, and you end up losing both. And the loss of our rights, as a parent, has to start somewhere, and I'm telling you, this is where it begins, and you have to ask what's next. And I'd like to read you several quotes from the scientists at the FDA public meeting that took place last Friday. So today, we focused almost exclusively on the COVID deaths to save the vaccine efficiency because we were led to believe that the vaccines were perfectly safe, but this is simply not true. Dr. Rose said the data suggests that COVID vaccines are driving the surge of mutations like Alpha and Theta variants. Dr. Steve Kirsch said, "I'm going to focus my remarks today on the elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about, that the vaccine kills more people than it saves." And even if the vaccines had 100% protection, it still means that we kill two people to save one life. And Dr. Rose noted that the vaccine risks outweigh the benefits in young people, especially children, and pointing to a thousand-fold increase in adverse reactions to the injection in 2021 compared to the over the last decade. Quote, "With this data, the medical establishment cannot confidently call out anti-COVID vaccine activists who publicly claim that the vaccines harm more than they save, especially in the young and healthy." And the fact is, we do not have clinical evidence to say these activists are wrong, and this should really terrify us all. And the swab used in the tests for COVID is not only made from China, but it's saturated with ethylene oxide, Google it, which is a carcinogen that damages DNA and fertility. And the same toxin can also be found in some of these masks. And I was just going to say, I hope we can also just come together and not pit each other against each other, because that's really how we're going to get through this.
The next speaker is Mr. Steve Welch.
I am a resident of Springfield and a life member of the Illinois Education Association, retired, and a life member of the National Education Association, retired. I retired from teaching after 36 years in a secondary social studies classroom where I primarily taught American government, but that was at Glenwood High School, our neighbor to the south here. And I'm here to speak about the process. The resolution that has been proposed requests that the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health consider, merely consider, including vaccinations for COVID-19 that are approved by the Food and Drug Administration into the regular schedule of immunization requirements currently mandated by the state of Illinois to consider this. And it begs the question, well, you know, sidebar, if approved, what is the process? If not approved, well, why not? Okay? But to consider it. It's a merely bill. It's a merely resolution. This resolution will merely put experts into examination and vantage points where they can pick it apart, put it back together again. Is it feasible for the state of Illinois or for any district? With all due respect to everyone here. Vaccination is currently the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, I know that there are mitigations that are layered, and we know that, like, let's put in good ventilation system, which we don't have it, you know, mask, vaccination, testing, testing, more testing, et cetera. All students and educators and ESPs and administrators and parents, everyone, should have the right to safety on campus, particularly in a classroom. Every available tool or approach should be considered if we are to realize safe in-person instruction, because students have the right to safe in-person instruction. Science tells us that more people are, the more people are vaccinated in a community, the safer our students and educators will be, and that's part of the argument here this evening, and people are doing the math very quickly. But we need to be able to use our buildings and our campuses. We need those things open. So how do we get at that, if possible? And I'd like to conclude by saying vaccinations are just one part of this mitigation effort, but the resolution has promise, and it has merit. Let's ask for some deliberation and reflection by experts and by Illinois government. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Sean Juggan.
First, I want to make this very, very clear. I take the virus as seriously as every single one of you. I have family members, they will not survive if they get COVID, even though they are vaccinated. I also want to make it clear that I appreciate the good intentions, but that doesn't mean masks actually work, not in small children, not in school. It doesn't mean that we don't want to keep children safe. Now, as for the vaccines, we were told this is years' worth of science, and they are so safe and so effective, but here we are, not even a year into them. The White House, CDC, planning for boosters, two FDA officials submit resignations, publish a letter in opposition to boosters, one of many reasons being an increased risk of side effects. Fauci says the letter is controversial, disagrees with most of it, has no doubt that FDA will approve them. But in the Friday FDA committee hearing, starting at 4:20, we hear in public testimony from a virologist who says, based on side effects, these kids shouldn't have vaccines at all. An ER doctor can't get his nurses to take them because they know the clinical trials were insufficient, and he's asked them to do actual large clinical studies, because right now observational studies show kids are at more risk from vaccines than they are from COVID. I don't have time, but I wish you'd all watch it, because it gets worse from there. Before the vote, one of the members, Dr. Portnoy, says it would be nice if we could wait for the safety data on boosters, and yes, there are real concerns about side effects, but kids are getting COVID, and those risks may be greater. His colleagues overwhelmingly disagreed with him. They want more data, and as you may know, they said no to boosters for 16 and older. I look around at this, and all I see is one big medical experiment with a pharmaceutical company who just pulled their FDA-approved drug, Chantix, after years on the shelves. And even though I'm afraid of what could happen if COVID hits my door, I'm not ready to volunteer my kids for it. As school board members, you may be ready to put your kids first in line for those boosters or those new shots for your younger ones, but what if, as a parent, you say, wait a minute, I'm not ready yet. I want to give it more time. But someone, like your school board president, no offense, I don't know you, or ISB, or Pritzker, comes along and says, nope, you don't have a choice. Roll up your sleeves. We're taking control of your children's health. We don't trust you to do it. It wouldn't take much courage to say yes to this resolution. I know you have a lot of support from the media, probably Fauci and them, but it would take a lot of courage and humility to say no to it. This isn't your call, and I hope you find that courage and humility.
Next, we have Mr. Ryan Juggan.
I want to speak very, very quickly to Journal of Pediatrics in 2000, actually what stopped disease mortality. I've told you this before. Sanitation, refrigeration, nutrition. Journal Pediatrics 2000, they admitted this. Again, we believe it's the vaccines. It's not. You can look that up. That's whatever. Masks don't work. I can show you all that science. My name is Ryan Juggan. You can look me up, and I'd be... You can look me up, and I'd be glad to sit down. I'll be glad to sit down with any doctor, any scientist from anywhere, because I don't know anything. All of my information comes from science and doctors, right? Okay. I want to revisit your guest speakers, who, she said, wash a mask once a week. These kids, I'm a teacher, they touch their mask all day long. After 15 minutes, once you touch a mask, it should be replaced. Again, that's what the experts who train doctors, surgeons on, they tell us. Okay? Anaphylactic shock was mentioned as the most severe reaction. Again, they covered various. It's 1% is what Harvard Medical said, but actually HHS, Human Health Services, admitted it's far below 1% that gets reported. Again, 15,000 deaths, hundreds of thousands of injuries. I'll remind you that this type of vaccine has not been successfully made through animal trials for decades. If you can find that info, all my links have now been scrubbed from the web. It's not pretty. One month of a lab rat equates to two and a half years of life for a human. We still have zero long-term study. Short-term data suggests this is the most dangerous vaccine in history. As I stated in my first address, this board that apparently was misinformation, which I'd love to see that YouTube, bring it on, we have the sickest children in the industrialized world, right? So 54% of our USA children have a chronic illness. That's old. All individuals that work with children ponder, "What's wrong with my children?" Childhood cancer is the number one killer. What's the vax have in common with this? In every vaccine insert, Section 13.1 of the drug insert, no vaccine has ever been evaluated for carcinogenic or mutagenic potential. Aborted fetal tissue cells, bovine serum, monkey kidney cells, nanoparticulate aluminum, think Alzheimer's for the old folks as it spills up in the brain because it can cross the blood-brain barrier, cause adverse reactions, and deaths. The question is, what is actually the risk benefit for old vaccines? Again, you guys had maybe 10 doses, those of you, you know, born in the 60s, 50s. Our kids get 30 doses in the first year of life, sometimes nine doses. Now, they're going to push the flu shot, which is a joke when you look at the data. Go in and look at the data. Top PhD, let's see, Johnny Anidis, this is the guy, this is the main man right here. He just put out infection survival, 99.9973%. Let's go to the science of the vax. CDC just said this, 12 to 15 years old, six times more likely to be hospitalized by the vaccine. CDC's own data, out of 765 kids, second dose, seven-day risk period, children age 12 to 15, zero to three myocarditis was expected, 12 cases in females, 117 in males. At 765, that's not time. 18 to 24, 213 males.
Thank you, Mr. Juggan.
Oh, my goodness, 121.
Moving on to 10.1. Superintendent Gill.
Are we going to have your public comments?
No.
Okay, well, I noticed four minutes of not listening to them, so.
Excuse me. We're moving on to 10.1. Superintendent?
This is report, Mr. Tom Osborne.
President Mars, Superintendent Gill, members of the board. Before the month of August, the education fund revenues were $7.85 million and education fund expenditures total $95.3 million. Revenues exceeded expenditures by $1.68 million. The operations and maintenance fund revenues were $725,000 and expenditures were $1.36 million. Expenditures exceeded revenue by $636,000. Next slide, please. Looking at the accounts receivable outstanding, as of September 16, outstanding FY21 state payments total $899,000, and for FY22, $3,000 for a total of $902,000 outstanding. Next slide, please. As of August 31, the district had a combined cash balance of $58.6 million in the bank for all funds. For the operating funds only, the ed fund, O&amp;M, transportation, working cash, total cash in bank was $35 million. Total investments were $74.2 million. Earned interest on all cash accounts for the month was $18,000, and year-to-date is $40,000. The interest rate for all cash accounts at August 31 was 0.75%. County sales tax proceeds received during the month of September are $1,098,829 for June collection. Total collections thus far are $11.1 million for the past 12 months. That concludes the August business report.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Okay, Superintendent, we're moving into.
Real quickly, I would like to note that that is a more favorable report than what we were thinking. Nice job.
Okay, Superintendent.
I have a quick question, too. Are we starting to realize some of the effect of the ESR money that we're getting in here? Are we able to relieve some of the burden from the budget with some of that money?
That's predicted. We have a slide on that.
Okay. All right, all right. Sorry.
No, it's perfect.
Don't steal the thunder, Mr. Osborne.
It's a great segment.
It's a quiet moment for you.
I appreciate the intro.
All right. We will go into public hearing on the FY22 tentative budget, so if you could ask for a motion.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion that the Board of Education adjourns to public hearing on the FY22 tentative budget, and that upon conclusion of such hearing, the board shall immediately reconvene to open session. Note, okay, there we go. All right.
Second.
Do we need a vote?
Yes. Blissitt.
Aye.
Lael Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
That is seven ayes.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Osborne to go over some amendments from last week's presentation that you heard. And there is a paper in your pocket, if you wanted to see that in front of you, rather than looking behind you.
Okay, I'm going to do the other next slide, please. So, upon due diligence, this is the preparation of the budget summary for fiscal year 22. Total revenues, $212,332,37. Total expenditures, $212,744,601. FY22 projected deficit, $412,274. This is an estimated fund balance of 15.24% of the operating budget within the 15% to 20% of the board files. The education fund revenues, $184,288,573. This is an increase of $8,796,573, or 5.01% of the amended FY21 budget. Of that, $5,518,767 are allocated from ESR3 funds. The ed fund projected surplus at the end of the year will be $2,114,633.
So, we were able to research and utilize some of the allowable fund sources from ESR3 that we're actually in the process of creating the budget for that are allowable. We called and made sure everything was copacetic, so to speak. So, Mr. Osborne and Mr. McVeigh worked diligently to look at our budget and see what could be paid for out of that that could relieve the ed fund specifically for this next year. And there's likely to be more money that will be able to be allocated in year two and year three. This money is available through September of 2024. So, there could be even more future savings as well, but this is what we know we can do right now as we begin to build our budget for ESR3 that just became available.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, last time when we were looking at estimates, that balance was dipping into the 13% range, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah, which wasn't a dire situation, but it's just, you know, you want to not see it continue with that trend, so it's really nice that we're holding right there where we need to be. Well done.
So, does this have to be approved by the ROE with the ESR funds?
State board.
State board.
Yes, but we made sure, you know, we called and.
So, it was checked out by them, too.
There could be more money that could be moved as well, but right now, we know a this amount of funding. And a lot of what ESR3 will do is allow us to increase our money for learning loss opportunities for the things that we discussed regarding remote learning and how to support those students. And just to go back to, if I could hire 25 teachers right now, I certainly would. The year I became a teacher, I had to go down the road to get a job because there weren't, there were like 60 people lined up for every job year, and that's just not the situation that we have in the state of Illinois or really the nation with teachers. So, as we move forward with this money, if we can, we will, because we know that that is an option that would help us greatly. So, you know, right now, this money is things that we can do within the ed fund to support learning that we know we have in place, and those monies can be utilized to help us with our fund balance. So, we appreciate that opportunity.
Absolutely. It's going to be a fluid work in progress as we evaluate every ESR dollar spent. It's something that.
We're highly accountable for that money. And we'll be getting a lot of updates because we're publicly required.
Payroll, equipment.
All of those things.
PD.
Yes, just a quick summary. There are specific percentages that you have to spend on learning loss or programs such as after-school and summer enrichment. They talk about subcontract. They talk about jobs, creating and retaining those jobs, sustainability, things of that nature, tutoring, extra duty, all of those things that we're trying to capture as ESR funding, and as they qualify, we're trying to impact them.
Perfect, thank you.
Certainly.
Well, that was certainly a little more enlightening than a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Osborne, you're doing a fantastic job on such very short notice.
September 7.
Okay, so now we're moving into 12.1, consent action items. Superintendent?
President Mars and members of the board, I recommend approval of consent action items, 12.2 through 12.4, as described in the corresponding resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I've got some discussion on 12.4. I just want the record to know this is Title II money, is that correct? With the National SAM.
Yes, it is.
So, do you, I'm guessing, in the environment we're with now with shortages of teachers, something like this would be as important as ever, being able to delegate efficiently.
And focus on instructional leadership in new and improved ways that we never did before.
So, I just wanted to know, it seems like this is something worthwhile, and it's earmarked with money that is targeted exactly for this kind of thing, so.
And they have done a great job of providing virtual trainings and having, bringing in key resources for remote learning strategies and structures for principals as well as the SAM, so they've really responded to the environment in which we're dealing with.
Okay, well, no further discussion, Ms. Hammers?
Lael Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissitt.
Aye.
That is seven ayes.
Okay, moving on to 13.1, roll call action items. Superintendent?
All right, I am going to introduce Mr. Lynn Williams, who's here sitting in for Mrs. Sherman, who's at a soccer game tonight. Hopefully, we did well. And he is our supervisor of non-certified staff at HR, so, Mr. Williams, I'll turn it over to you.
President Mars, member of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of personal recommendations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Hearing none.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissitt.
Aye.
Lael Wolf.
Aye.
That is seven ayes.
I did shamelessly brag on Mr. Williams an exec session, just so you know, about the work you've done to help us build our professionals and get them into our schools, serving our students, being very creative and thinking outside the box with some of our ESR dollars. So, thank you for your service, and you've made a big difference. We appreciate you.
I already told them you were shamelessly bragging on them. I just want to second that. So, good job.
All right, roll call action item 13.2, approval of a resolution for adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2022. Superintendent?
Mr. Osborne. We have to read the resolution.
He didn't write it.
He was probably so prepared for that, too. It's on ESPN. It's on here. Take it up here.
The superintendent recommends adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022, fiscal year 2022. Whereas, the Board of Education of Springfield Public Schools, School District Number 186, County of Sangamon, State of Illinois, calls to be prepared in tentative form a budget, and the secretary of this board has made the same conveniently available for public inspection for at least 30 days prior to the final action. Thereon, and whereas, a public hearing was held as to such budget on the 20th day of September 2021. Notice of said hearing was given at least 30 days prior thereto as required by law, and all the other legal requirements having been complied with. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows. One, that the fiscal year of the school district be and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. And two, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures from each be and the same is hereby adopted as the budget of the school district for said fiscal year.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Miller.
Aye.
Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissitt.
Aye.
Lael Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
That is seven ayes.
Okay, moving on to 13.3, appointment of the treasurer. Superintendent?
Yes, we just have to switch to Mr. Osborne here. Be it resolved that Mr. Thomas Osborne be appointed treasurer to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none?
Okay, Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissitt.
Aye.
Lael Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
That is seven ayes.
Congrats.
Welcome. Moving on to 13.4, student discipline. Superintendent?
President Mars and members of the board, it is my recommendation that one seventh grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Lincoln Magnet School through the end of the 2021-22 school year with a program, and that one seventh grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Washington Middle School through the end of the 21-22 school year with a program, that one eighth grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Washington Middle School through the end of the 2021-22 school year with a program, and that one 12th grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Lamphier High School through the end of the first semester 2021-22 school year with a program. I have one question. Which of those is going to be revisited at the semester? Was it the seventh grade or the eighth grade?
Seventh grade.
Okay, so, Ms. Hammers, can you make a note that on the second one that I wrote that there will be a review by the board at the semester?
Yes, and I'll start including those in what you read.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none?
Okay, Ringer.
Aye.
Zimmers.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissitt.
Aye.
Lael Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
That is seven ayes.
All right, moving on to 14.1. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be October the 4th at 5:30 for executive session. Public session will begin at 6:30. 14.2, we have some upcoming district events. September 24, there's no school for a teacher institute date, and October 11, there will be a school holiday, no school on October 11. Is there any other business to bring before the board? Board members?
Mr. Mars, I just wanted to say thank you to Black Hawk Elementary School and Harvard Park Elementary School for inviting me to come to the classrooms today. I really enjoyed my time with them and their teachers, so I really appreciate their hospitality and for the invitation. They were exceptional.
Thank you for those comments. Seeing that there's no business to come before the board, the time is now 8:21. We are adjourned until October 4, 2021. Thank you for everyone for attending this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to run to the restroom. How about there? That was a couple hours.